Good evening, I will call the July eighth Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order. It is now six forty-five. And if you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we use this way.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as the Republic of which stands one nation, unafraid and invincible with liberty and intellect supreme.
Thank you. And for a roll call, we have Tracy, our secretary is absent this evening. We're on vacation, so I'll go ahead and call a roll. Vice President Shafter.
Here.
Treasury Gilmore.
Here.
Trusty Vanderhyde.
Yeah.
Trusty Patton.
Here.
Trusty Bowser.
Here.
President Reed here. We've established a quorum, thank you. Adoption of the agenda, I would entertain a motion for as presented. So moved to support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shafter.
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to gratitudes, and I will open up the tables to share gratitudes.
Well, I'm grateful for being on a new space.
Very nice. How's this?
I know we mentioned it last, uh, last meeting, but I'm thankful for the work going on in the ground. It's not easy to not, the temperature goes up and down, we get rain, the soil conditions change, the, the sites around the, the construction site changes constantly, so, as part of our team is working on, uh, on the buildings and those conditions, I know it's, it can be challenging, and doing it safely is challenging, keeping the site secure itself. Thank you for that.
I'm grateful for last, our last meeting just showing that we communicate, and just like how we collaborate together, and just when we were talking about the stadium lighting and all of that, and I just appreciate all of the conversation and, and that we work together.
Yeah, I too incredibly appreciative of the work of the facilities team. Uh, they were here today helping to make sure that this space was gonna be ready. Uh, they're moving people from, uh, things from, uh, the admin building down to Red Hawk right now. They've completed the move over to, uh, the middle schools, there's just a lot of things, uh, going on, uh, that are front and center, and essential to us opening smoothly in order, so. Uh, they're doing a great job, so we can, the team are on top of it, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, and move on to our consent items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Vice President Shafter.
Did somebody say?
Oh.
You're quite suspicious.
I'm a fan of support for myself, yourself.
Okay, here we go. Vice President Shafter.
Yes.
Sec, uh, Treasury Gilmore.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. Motion carries for ten consent items on normal business reports. That brings us to our closed session for this evening, and we, we pursue into open this meeting at sections eight K for safety and security planning. I would entertain a motion to move into closed session.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shafter.
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. We will move into closed session, let the record show, it is six fifty. So, let the record show, it's eight fifteen, and we've returned from closed session. That brings us to the point of our meeting for discussion, and first up, with Madi, we have a financial update.
All right, uh, just go real quick through the finance update. One thing to note, I did not include a budget year-to-date report for the general fund this, uh, this month. Reason being, uh, we're doing the year in close, so there's a lot of journal entries, a lot of allocations, and, um, it would not be accurate or a flash, kind of where we're going to land at this point, so I just decided to, did not include it, because there's, there's a lot of movement going on as we wrap up the year. Uh, post approvals, both revenue and expenses. Um, didn't include the bond budget in there. Um, and then the primary thing to discuss is, the state did pass a school aid budget, um, early in the morning, I believe around four or five AM on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, they passed a budget. Um, it looked nothing like the three budget proposals that the executive branch, House and Senate released. Um, so we're still kind of diving in and assessing, uh, what this will mean for, for the district for twenty-four, twenty-five. A couple highlights, you know, we had discussed the possibility of reducing that UAAL, the, the pension, healthcare portion of the retirement pension. Um, so they did do a one-year reduction on that UAAL rate that uh, all districts pay into the pension system, so they reduced it by five point seven-five percent. Um, right now, it's estimated that will be about equivalent of a four hundred dollars per pupil, um, savings for the district. Um, I had predicted two hundred and forty-one dollar increase to the per pupil foundation allowance, or two-five percent. Uh, we've got a zero percent increase. Um, thirty-one AA is the school safety and mental health funding. Uh, they cut that drastically from, uh, by about ninety percent from what they funded last year. That impact for us this fiscal year shouldn't be, uh, felt, uh, too greatly, because we received our thirty-one AA funding so late in FY twenty-three, twenty-four. We received the funding in April, I believe, about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We are deferring most of that, those funds into this fiscal year, so that, that reduction to thirty-one AA for the school aid budget, we will not feel that until next fiscal year. The twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year is when, um, and that will be approximately a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit, if, if that really just goes away. Um, one positive note, they did increase thirty-one A at-risk funding, um, so we should see a slight increase to thirty-one A. Uh, but that is, uh, quite restrictive in how we use it, so we'll have to kind of put our thinking's caps on to how best to utilize those, those funds and stay in compliance with the, uh, the rules and regulations that go along with thirty-one A. Uh, any, any questions on the budget? As I said, we're still kind of going through it, assessing it, and there probably will be, um, we won't have all the answers for quite a while, is the, now that it's been passed, now MDE is kind of starting to dig through it and determine how best to implement the budget, and what did the lawmakers truly mean, and, uh, so they'll be going through it over the next several months to implement it, so.
So if I super oversimplified this, and tell me if I'm too much simplified, so for saving four hundred dollars per pupil, we're actually a hundred and fifty in the re, in the, as far as what you mentioned versus.
Then, then that impact would be a hundred and sixty, roughly.
Yeah, roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, yes. Uh, so, so that is a positive.
But it's only for one year, so the next year, we're looking at roughly times, I hear you.
If they don't make it a permanent reduction. Um, they did a few goofy things, um, certain, if, if you're in a certain pension plan, you're currently paying in three percent to the, uh, pension healthcare system. Um, so they are going, instead of eliminating that, all of, all of those employees will still pay that three percent of their paycheck in, but then they'll get reimbursed three percent, but if we taxable income, so it's, they'll be paying income tax on that reimbursement. Um, so, kind of a, a little bit of a shell game, um, so.
Thank you. Moving on, annual school bond loan application.
Yes, this is something we have been doing, uh, annually for the, well, as long as I've been here. Um, essentially, the annual school bond loan fund is, is the funding mechanism that allows districts to, uh, pass new, uh, debts, um, and still maintain their kind of a steady mileage rate. Uh, so you can go to voters and say, we're looking to pass this bond, but we're gonna maintain our mileage rate at seven mils. So you won't see an increase in your mileage rate. Um, if, if your property taxes are going up, we pay more, but, um, and what this allows us is, currently, our seven mils that we levy on an annual basis, it's not enough to cover what we owe on our debt services annually. So the school bond loan fund covers that difference. Uh, so we're currently projected to need to borrow about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the state, um, and that will be a borrowing in for the, the May two thousand twenty-five debt service. Um, so this is, you know, this is all been part of the plan as we've issued bonds, um, it's nothing unusual. It's an annual application, but we do have to take action on it tonight, so that we can have it submitted by the deadline of, uh, August first. And then once, uh, we won't borrow in December, or November, but we will borrow in April for the May debt service, and at that point, we'll have, look at where the numbers have landed, and, uh, submit a actual borrowing application for the actual amount that we'll borrow.
Thank you. Moving on, district exterior signage project.
So, uh, this is the second, this information, uh, we spent some time with it at our last meeting in June. Um, we are looking, um, there is a recommendation made, uh, by Russell uh, to go with the Midwest Sign Group, and, um, also going with their alternate bid for uh, thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, uh, to complete the package. The alternate bid, remember, is a, a solid base, a solid black base below the, uh, the sign itself versus a pedestal base, two legs coming down, so it just looks more, uh, solid, it would, would more consistent across the district. Um, I would also recommend that we work with Vic and the team to, uh, put a concrete apron or some kind of on the base of the sign, to keep the mowers, uh, in the maintenance group away from those, uh, bases to help improve the longevity of them.
Oh, that was for thicker sign, right, because there was a thin model, and there was one that was a little heavier.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I asked Russ about these one more durable or more structurally sound, and he said, reality is, those are sore and, you know, uh, solid concrete foundations below the cross, they're not going anywhere. Um, but it is, uh, a better, it, it matches the monument signs, and it's okay, more.
So it's just aesthetic, aesthetical, whichever one matches the, right.
So we're just gonna do the concrete pads, that's just a general operation, that's, that was an incident.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Any other question? Moving on, not to specialize in deed, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five handbook revision proposal.
So, um, in the, in board book, you'll see the collection of the different handbooks. Um, the one adjustment that I did, uh, make, and I made note of this in the email communication to you regarding the agenda, uh, in the, um, uh, high school, um, document, uh, there is some revised language regarding the cellphone garages, and the use of those cellphones in the classroom. Um, that is found, I believe, on page, um, I apologize that I don't have it. Um, I believe it's found on page fourteen, thank you so very, very much. In the center, um, there's three segments, uh, bottom third of the page, um, that is just, okay, three segmented pieces. That's a, a, an attempt to, uh, provide a bridge between what was proposed and, uh, what I'm hearing uh, as far as possible concerns me forward to that. So really getting more of a rationale behind the why. Um, in terms of, uh, prior to, uh, the district going one-to-one, the cellphone was a predominant, uh, resource for students to access, uh, online content in the classroom before we had uh, Chromebooks, and once we provided Chromebooks, uh, it's still maybe an option for teachers to elect to use, but, uh, if the teacher is not directing, the students are not saying it's giving the students the green light to use their Chromebook or their cellphone in the classroom, then the student will keep their phone, uh, in their cellphone, in the cellphone garage, which would just be hanging that by the, um, bar.
So, so this version of it would be basically the mandatory, you're putting your, your cellphone in the locker unless the teacher says, hey, for extract purposes today, we're gonna do exercise involving technology, if you have the phone, maybe you'll something to that effect, right?
So a student would have three options for their phone.
Okay.
Uh, four, maybe, uh, one, don't bring it, or leave it in their car.
Yeah.
Two, leave it in their locker. Three, leave it in their backpack or their purse. Um, four, put it in the cup, and they can't leave it out on the desk. Like that would be an option, because it's too much of a distraction.
Right.
You know, so we're just trying to provide a system for students who, oh, I wore shirt pants and don't have any pockets in it. You know, I don't bring a bag, I don't have a place to put my phone, so no one knows it's there, it's not a problem. If it's, if it's, you know, in your bag and you don't get it out during class, it's when you get it out during class, that's when it becomes a, an issue.
Teachers allow the kids to have free time, that's at the class, and there's no instruction. Um, and the kids are not able to, they're saying, I don't know. How, how are we gonna go about that?
Respectfully, there shouldn't be free time, it's for learning, you know? So that, to me, that's an issue that we, or the principal works with the teacher on maximizing, you know, the use of their instructor.
So, Victor, so I understand, like, we need to instruct the kids while they're in the classroom, but do you think maybe it's healthy for the kids to have a short break towards the end of their classes, just to, because, you know, they don't have very much time to go to their locker, get their next set of books, and get to their next class. I, I know for that, we don't, my kid can't even go to the bathroom without being tired, we don't have that amount of time that they have. Um, and there's no, like, refresher or moment other than lunch to just, okay, I need five minutes from all of this learning to just re-cread my brain for a minute, and the big brain, there's only lunch break, and I don't need, how long is lunch? Thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes.
Okay, so they've done most of that kind of talking with their friends usually, if they got a chance, and they're little, but their cellphone's whatever. I just, I think they need a few minutes for the end of lunch class to just, I mean, I'm sure, I'm not, I'm not.
I feel like that was kind of a separate issue though, isn't it?
Yeah, but I feel like in that time, that they're, you know, have that minute to just, you know, de-press from schoolwork, and they could get their phone out for a few minutes, and we'll take away from that jittery, I'm sitting here, and I don't wanna be, I don't know, it's just a thought.
So I think it speaks to a little bit, my concern is, if the teacher, you know, if, if we're, if we're enacting this and the board policy said it's teacher choice, this is more restrictive than policy that we have, in my opinion. It's okay, we don't agree with me. Um, and so, you know, when, even when we're in adult training, and things go down, oh, okay, we've been hard at this for forty-five minutes, everybody breathe for, you know, three minutes or whatever. My concern is, this will negate that discretion of classroom management. That's my answer.
I'm all about the cellphone garage, I don't, because my kid will only pay attention if the cellphone is there most of the time. I was, I'm a very thick of that, I'm a very good at that.
Yeah, the way this reads is the teacher gives students permission to get their personal communication device out, they can.
Okay.
So. Um, can you tell me more about why, um, we are restricting backpacks and book bags from the classrooms? That's really about, um, reducing clutter in the classrooms and, uh, making it a safer environment. You know, safer from cluttered, or both, sa- safer because it's less cluttered, and also safer because you can't hide things, even bags that don't exist.
Oh, so the mission update is cellphone, well, so, you know, because it says you should have your cellphone in that, or you know, they have that, we give the backpack a thirty.
I guess my concern with that would just be because there's so little time in between classes. If I'm a student here, and I have five minutes, and I have to go to my locker and get all my stuff for my next class, and I have to use the restroom, and maybe it's that time of the month, that's all gonna take them five minutes, and so, that would be my concern, is that doesn't seem, when I was in high school, I carried my backpack and my coat with me every day, every single class, and it was my responsibility to make sure that it was tucked under my desk and that it wasn't in the way. Um, I went to Rockford, so it was a bigger school, so it was a lot further for me to walk to my locker, but I, we also had, I think, longer types in between, and, so I, the bathroom thing is always a concern to me. Um, but that would be a concern, is if I have to go for every single class, go back to my locker to get all the stuff for the next class, and use the bathroom, and, you know, maybe it's on the clean other side of the building, yeah, so. I don't have a solution, but those are my concerns.
Yeah.
I would like having the backpacks, just because of Oxford, I mean, it was in his backpack, I just, it, it does concern me with being able to bring backpacks into the classroom, we, we didn't do it prior to COVID, and then COVID hit, and then we all of a sudden allowed it again.
Because we do, I didn't realize it was the, hanging out around the backers.
Yeah, 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 so, they did, I think they did okay, I mean, we could see how.
Fascinated, I, a couple kids said they did. Okay with that, because they, the answer was, well, we did it before, I guess, all right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I just, I get, I, I, it just makes me nervous with, I don't know, with safety and everything like that, that just, the big backpacks, but the girls can bring purses, or, I mean, guys can.
Little ones are small.
Yeah, well, yeah, just as not large purses, like, I mean, like a bag, yeah, or, I don't know, I, I just, it's cheap. My boots especially, if I need that. But just, yeah, something to.
Well, and if we, if this is something we want to enforce, we might, if we're gonna use the word large purses, we might wanna put some, some more specifics in there, because that will mean different things to different people. So, with one meeting before the start of school, um, and you've got questions, that are legitimate questions. My recommendation is that we perhaps do a special meeting with the high school staff to talk about the high school. Because otherwise, you're gonna have questions.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea. I have always had a fear, so just, like, I've got older kids, and we're probably a little restricted, we don't, they don't have cellphones, and so, you know, they're, they're, they, they will soon, right, as they start driving, but what's the, what is the urgent, I, I, I didn't have one in high school, what's the urgent nature of needing to get a cellphone between classes? Just so I know, because I'm not, I'm not aware, if there's an emergency, the parents can call the school, so, and I'm not trying to be the phone Nazi or anything, I just want to understand if you guys are thinking around the urgency of having access to that electronic device between classes, what are you guys thinking about?
So for me, I'm looking at, we're missing an opportunity to teach healthy cellphone usage, and when it's appropriate, it is, and when it's not. Um, if I walk into, you know, if I have, if I'm, if I'm mandated to do something in every class, is that teaching me, or just don't do it, or is there other, I just, I, I'm worried it's we're overthinking an issue where it could be a teachable, that's my concern.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I just, I wanna make sure I understood what everybody was thinking about here, because this is the one place we could talk about it, right? So trying to understand what everybody's thinking about in terms of having, needing access to it.
I can tell you my personal, um, one of my personal incidents is my daughter was in one of the upstairs bathrooms, took the way, and she felt so ill that she literally couldn't come. Like, she was laying on the floor of the bathroom, gross. She was able to contact me from her cellphone. Um, I came to her, and when I got here, the office didn't know where she was, they didn't know, like, they didn't know anything, she, because nobody had come into the bathroom, nobody had seen that she was in there, nobody had, so, good twenty minutes, she's laying on the bathroom floor. Had she not had a cellphone to contact me, who knows how long that would have been? So, it, it wasn't an urgency, thankfully, but it could have been.
For me, it's like my kid needs a ride somewhere after school, but then he's playing baseball, you have to figure out, or just, it's a little bit time, because they ride the bus to the waiting, but then how does he get home? And once I have the work done, sometimes, so we always have to figure these things out. So for me, it's nice if he's able to get a cellphone out at the end of the class, and be able to text me, okay, you know, we're, like, and I can text him, but sometimes then leave the ride home, or, so for me, it's just nice to be in communication with the kid. I know, it's crazy, like, yeah.
It's nice, it's nice.
He can call me from the school telephone, but it's so much more convenient, if you can just text me.
Sure, yeah, it's not crazy, I just wanted to get, say, just where you guys are coming from, that's all, just wanted to.
Yeah, it's a new age, really, I remember being in high school, and I'd have to go down to the office and call my parents at work, or, you know.
Yeah, we had cellphones in the building, not cellphones, I'm sorry, payphones, we had payphones, we didn't call, but, and our name was, this is Shannon, pick me up.
Yeah.
Thank you, sure, I appreciate it.
So that could also go back to the five-minute issue too, if you need to get in, in touch with your parents, and you don't have five minutes between classes, you don't have time to go to office, and it's obvious.
Or if you have to go to the bathroom, take your time.
There's always been five minutes. For some reason, seven minutes is, but I, I'm sure that's too long, but is it open that short of a time?
For, for a while, it's, I don't know, forever, but.
And there's probably not a way we could add, like, another minute on in between classes, probably.
I mean, we've increased instructional time. It's, how, everything we say yes to, we have to say no to something else.
Yeah, right.
And we just have to make sure that we're saying yes to the right things, and we're saying no to the right things.
Is there a way that we could just maybe relax a little bit on the bathroom, like, um, I don't know, like, passes, like, because, I mean, for girls, I mean, it, you don't really choose, really, so sometimes it's difficult. I know, with that, it's probably not. Yeah, yeah.
As far as back, I actually, cellphones, it's a bathroom, the bathroom's not, you know.
Well, I'm just thinking, and we have a new, and now, and another concern brought to us too, about the attendance policy, which just came in just before the board meeting, so we kept that too.
Well, I was just thinking, because of, about in-between classes, and just worrying about going to the bathroom, you don't have time to go to the bathroom, so I was just thinking, well, if we relax a little bit, maybe bathroom passes, maybe that it won't be such a big deal in-between classes to get to class.
We have a thousand students in this building a day, and most of the students find a way to go in the bathroom, most of the students find a way to tech, communicate with their parents, most students figure out a way to communicate with each other. They're resourceful, you know, I'm not aware that bathrooms are a problem, maybe you're hearing things differently than what I am. Um, you know, in I- You know, in isolation, yes, we can find. Causal problem. Language with every. Element of the policy documents that were. For the, the handbook documents that we consider.
With this, I will say, when I subbed. It was very distracting, especially like I'm an ADD person, so then to be able to like, even if it buzzes, it like, it would be distracting to kind of then get back on track and especially kiddos are ADD. A little bit, it's just like, it's like a distraction and. So I mean. Maybe if it's just, everybody, I mean, if you're gonna be irresponsible and use your phone when you're not supposed to, then it has to go to the garage, or, I don't know, just something like that, then that would show responsibility or. I don't know. I'm not a fan of cell phones in classes, I'm just, I'm not, but. I'm sure there's can be collaboration.
Thinking especially, do you want to speak?
Uh, as far as the cell phone garages, I. I can go either way, you know, I see positives and negatives, uh. I feel like, you know, I. In my personal life right now, uh, dealing with a similar situation and. And having cell phones in the teaching environment, I'm, I'm figuring out what to do with that. But that, to me, is more of a classroom management piece and, you know, it's on me to figure that out. Uh, that's where I feel a little bit, you know, hesitant on throwing it in the handbook. Um. Because now all of a sudden we're, we're dictating how to. Uh, but. I can go either way, so. You know, I, I see the value, I'm with you, I see, I see value in not having cell phones in classrooms, I don't think that's the issue right. Right now in the handbook. Um, because the teacher can, can say, hey. Every, every cell phone goes in the backpack. You know, that's a way to secure it. Um, don't wanna see any cell phones on desks. Uh, I feel like there's other ways to, to do it. I, I think it's a tool, for sure. But now, you know, how, yeah, I don't know, I could go either way. Uh, the other side, if I wanna play devil's advocate, um. It would be just a, a tool for a teacher. To put in the classroom, right, so what's the harm in that? Yeah. But as far as backpacks. Same thing, I, I feel like the kids were doing it before COVID, uh, some. Are probably gonna struggle just that initial transition period, uh, to figure things out, but. We have great administration, great staff that'll. They'll have forgiveness and I'm sure as students figure this stuff out, so.
Well, I didn't mean to open up a whole big issue with the backpacks, I didn't realize they were, no, not before, it was just something that stood out to me and I went, huh.
I'm, I'm sure they'll hear about it coming fall, I'll have three now in the high school, so. It's crazy to me, that's beside the point, but yeah, I'm sure they'll tell me. Whether they can or can't, and we'll figure it out from there, so. And I, I like the idea that, you know, it's a safety, security thing, it's less clutter, uh, gets kids back in the hallways and. And less stuff out of classrooms.
So we're thinking a special meeting to discuss it again, that's kind of what we're leaning?
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear from the, from the high school folks.
Yeah.
Did you have a date, Mike?
I don't, I'd, I'd love to check with Todd, the problem, so Todd's at a conference at our June work session. And he's on vacation with his family at the UP tonight, so he's not been able to be here. For the two times that normally we would have been able to have this conversation, you know. Um.
So what's your dates?
Double check and throw the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth. Out, do either of those work better?
I think one is good for me.
So you guys all know, use my cell phone. Answer my screens.
I actually said that.
But the difference is, I, I know how to stay focused on. Our meeting and ask for emails and ask for any other stuff. Or child, just.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine is better for me, but I'll do it with no sir.
And you're not thinking we're gonna have another special meeting for any discipline thing that's fallen off the table?
You know, that's a great point, they, there is a disciplinary piece out there, um, that we're trying to determine. When the best time could be, so maybe we could bundle those two things together.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great thought.
I'm not gonna argue with you there, Mr.
Okay, well, stay tuned, thank you for the discussion. Well, hot up. So we're moving, that's not, nothing's on for action, so we're okay. Um, moving on to our last discussion item, bond construction facility update with Scott.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you a quick highlight, um. Beach well underway, if you've driven by, uh, that space, there, they've done the, the, uh, I didn't, I wouldn't call it demolition, it was really deconstructed, they really did an outstanding job of. You know, picking those elements of the building apart and then removing all of those. You know, all of the remains, uh, and they did an outstanding job, uh, with that work, it's, it was really, it was really cool to watch over a couple of week window. Uh, so now they're preparing, they're doing the, um, grading, they're preparing the site for the new. Uh, footprint for the new wing and, uh, they'll get pouring on that, uh, in, in the very near future, um, so that project is. Well underway, um. We did get final, the final green light, uh, from the state to move on our cold storage building, it, it's been. Uh, sixty-eight months essentially since I sat down with, uh, Brett, uh, Willett and, uh, Barry Rayburn, and they said, hey, I've got an idea. Uh, we'd like to put a greenhouse up, uh, that was my first. Fall when I started in twenty eighteen, and they said, okay, let's make that happen, I thought it'd be easy, uh, but it's been a long, arduous trek. Uh, but finally we're clear through the state, uh, I think they're gonna break ground. Next week or this week, they're. With our posts, and so. They're, they've, they said it, it will be operational before the start of school, so. Very, very, very grateful for that and also grateful for the patience of our, uh, for our staff and for our team. Um, so the last piece is just, uh, two things, one, you know, we're making the Exodus out of the administration building and. And moving things over, uh, into Red Hawk, so that's really a two-week span, we're doing a couple of groups. Uh, this week and then, um, technology transition, uh, the fiber optic line is going to be, um, you know, dropped from the. Administration building and then transitioned over to Red Hawk, so we'll be able to move the servers down. Um, it was, it was interesting today, at one point, you know, you do a, a two hundred, uh, and forty-degree view, over here, you've got a couple of guys in a bucket truck. Doing some things with the fiber optics line and over here, you've got big cranes and things moving at Red Hawk. I think, wow, and then down in the middle, you've got people, you know, scrambling in and out of the building with construction, there are a lot of really cool things. Uh, happening, um, but then the last thing is just in terms of the, the next, uh, the final phase of the project in this building. Um, the health addition, the, the conditioning addition, the fifth addition down on the far east end of the building, and that's really coming in nicely under budget. Um, and so what it's do, it's doing is, you know, allowing us to take a look at some of the other, uh, core things that we want to try to accomplish. Um, so service roads, that type of thing, um, was something that was, uh, a, a real. A substantive discussion that we had with the team from Triangle and GMV, uh, two weeks ago on Thursday, um. Uh, just before the Fourth of July, so we're really, uh, GMV right now is tasked with, uh, creating some ideas for us to consider, uh, for, um. Kind of redirecting flow for the drop-off and pickup at Cedar Trails. Uh, so perhaps, um, you know, rethinking that four-way stop. Um, out, um, you know, we're out front of trails, kind of the northwest of trail, between trails and beach. And so we're, we're excited to get some smoother flow, uh, from that, because that's kind of a sticking point, both for parents. But it's also a sticking point for busing, so what we're trying to do is kind of create an alternate queue line so that you can get. Parents who are dropping off and picking up a trail out of that mainstream of traffic, which will, uh, hopefully keep that four-way stop more free and open. So similar to the work that we did back at the beginning of the. Bond construction at the middle school, you know, we created some very different queuing lines at the middle school and it. It pulled all the traffic in off sixteen mile. Um, so really, it, it enhanced the flow of things around that, uh, facility, so. We're looking to get the same type of, of return on investment, uh, at Trails. So.
Glad it worked because I can't figure it out.
I still try to get out there, I'm like, I have no idea where it's supposed to go down. Yeah, but when there's a queue, when there's a line of people, then you just get on the line, yeah. Yeah. Uh, but no, I think we, we feel good about where we are numbers-wise, uh, to bring the high school project home and to really provide a neat space. For our students, but also to provide a neat space, um, for guests who come and, uh, visit the stadium, you're gonna see some enhancements there. And we'll get more, um, visuals for you to, to look at, uh, in, uh, in, uh, August and into September. The goal for that project is to be ready to go to bid, uh, in October of twenty-four. Uh, and to put a shovel in the ground, um, after our board meeting in October of twenty-four. Uh, if we can do that, uh, then we'll be on track to be able to open that space for students in the fall of twenty-five. So they feel confident that we're gonna be able to pull and. And, and really pull things together, so next year is gonna be another busy, uh, building year for us, but, you know, the, the bulk of our work will be done. Uh, in the fall of twenty-five, so we're, we've got about fourteen months to go. We're looking to get the keys for Beach, um, you know, in about, in about a year, so twelve months from now. Uh, which will be nice, you know, we'll get the building in July, we're not gonna be worried in the middle of August, are we gonna be able to open? You know, we're gonna have the building turned over, uh, ready for students. So. Things are going well.
Question. Thank you. That ends our discussion portion of the meeting, it brings us to the public comment time. Where if anyone would like to go to the board for three minutes, this would be a time that we would listen, we won't be acting on any concerns, but I would open up the floor if we have any takers, do you have any takers, Mrs. Gus, do you know? Any taker? Okay, go in once. One twice. And we'll close public comments. Brings us to action items. Annual school board loan, loan applic- application, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
Go move.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shocker?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, motion carries. Second action item is the Tetrak exterior signage project, and I would entertain a motion.
I move that we take the recommended. I don't have all the details. Midwest sign, were there alternate? Of however much Scott said it was.
Nine thousand block.
Thank you. Nine ninety-two.
There you go.
Nine ninety-two. Okay. Support. Any discussion?
Uh, just a quick question, and Scott, you triggered them, so it's your fault. So you talked about redoing some of those stuff at Trails, the entry, redoing potentially that four-way stop, are you seeing that into account for the signage? Now that you said that, then.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
And I would assume that. Those signs should be movable.
Yeah, if we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We brought this man.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
The best of the amazing things were submitted.
Okay, I get, thank you for the clarification. Okay, so motion, a second discussion, moving to the vote, Vice President Shocker?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, motion carries. Brings us to the communication portion of the meeting, um, you're up to date with any communication we received and. Thank you, Shannon, for bringing up the later email we got about the tenants, I didn't see that on my way here. And. That's all I have for, um, Board of Education information.
Yeah, similarly, the only thing I had was the email from Jen Cook, so. We're on the same page.
Okay, very good. So planning, uh, stay tuned for a special meeting today, we'll try to wind in a discipline if we have it and further handbook conversation. Our next regular, um, meeting would be then August twelfth with a six forty-five start, and with that. We can stand adjourned at eight fifty-six. Thank you.